I call this meeting of the Duncanville Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. We will now take action for closed session. Do I have a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent as presented in closed session of the administrative appointment of Director of Assessment and Accountability?
Go move.
Second.
Tom made the motion and Janice seconded. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passed, 7-0. Ms. Brown, would you like to come introduce us to our new employee?
Good evening, President McNeely, Dr. Smith, Board of Trustees. It is my pleasure to introduce Ms. Stephanie Benau as the Director of Assessment and Accountability. Ms. Benau is entering her 17th year in the field of education. During that time, she has served as a teacher, instructional specialist, and most recently as an Assistant Principal for Advanced Academics. Ms. Benau is currently pursuing her doctorate in educational leadership at Dallas Baptist University. She believes that leadership is about growing others. Her leadership style encourages students and teachers to push themselves beyond their comfort zone so that they are able to reach their potential. She also believes that a true leader must be confident, patient, and observant. She knows when to be patient, she knows how to demonstrate confidence in the plan to reach a goal, but also when to push and when not to. Her skill set has resulted in a 75% increase in advanced placement tests given over a two-year period at her current campus, and an increase in student participation in advanced classes of 27%. Ms. Benau knows that the success of a leader is directly proportionate to the success of the district, campus, faculty, and students. She is looking forward to serving as the Director of Assessment and Accountability with pride and purpose for Duncanville ISD. I introduce you to Ms. Stephanie Benau.
Thank you, President McNeely, Dr. Smith, and Board of Trustees. Thank you so much for this opportunity to serve in Duncanville as your Director of Assessment and Accountability. I would also like to thank my husband and sons for supporting me and giving me the ability to grow in my leadership capacity. Without them making sacrifices, I wouldn't have been able to invest the time needed to grow leadership capacity in students and teachers throughout my career. As I look back on my path leading to this change, I can see God's hand ensuring that I followed His plan even when I tried to get off the path. I'm thankful and humbled that He led me here, keeping me in the right spot, surrounded by the right people, from whom I could learn and grow. Albert Einstein stated, "Intellectual growth should commence at birth and cease only at death." It's my calling as an educator of adults and students to make learning a continuous process for all. I'm honored to be chosen for this role and will strive to do my part to help write success stories one student at a time in Duncanville ISD. Thank you.
We'd ask that Ms. Benau's husband please stand at this time.
Mr. Joe Vera Cruz will now lead us in the invocation as we start the opening ceremonies.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we feel comfortable, Lord, coming to you in a time of need. And at this time, Lord, we want to just pray for Lamarcus Washington, one of our Duncanville students, his family, all his friends, Lord, and all that are affected by him, Lord, that you would show them comfort, peace, and joy, Lord. Also pray, Lord, for each one of our students, from the time they're picked up, from the school route to the time they get to school, Lord, to the time they get home. We pray for their safety, Lord. Also thank you for the servant's heart of each one of our teachers and everyone involved in the schools. I thank you for this board, Lord, and the opportunity to come and serve you. In your mighty name we pray, amen.
Students from Duncanville High School will come lead us in the pledges.
Good evening, President McNeely and Dr. Smith. I would like to introduce you to, from our youth in government, we have Ms. Lyric Johnson, Jackie Sensory, Rochelle Marada, and Janelle Ramada. And from the inaugural class of 2021 from our collegiate academy, we have we have Amisadi Adama Velasquez, Caleb Berry, and Anaya Bernard. Thank you, students.
Now it's time for our recognitions. Ms. Tiara Richard.
Good evening, Board. Ms. McNeely, Dr. Smith, and Board of Trustees, thank you for this opportunity. Anytime we get a chance, as I've always said, to come before you and recognize people who are doing great things in the district, it's a huge honor. And so we appreciate the opportunity to do this on a monthly basis. First up, we have our All Pro Dads. I'd ask that they'd come forward. This is just a small sampling, actually, of our All Pro Dads. These are the ones who could make tonight's meeting, and these are the gentlemen who will be at our campuses, at our schools, encouraging our kids, supporting them, making sure they're taken care of. To give you a little bit of background, this is the second year we've had All Pro Dads. It's an international organization founded by Family First, committed to bringing international, excuse me, intentional focus to fathers. They provide guidance and practical tips in raising children in a life-giving way. For us, we had a draft on last Thursday, and again, that's the Family and Community Engagement Group had a draft where we trained a new team captains, and these captains will lead our dads as they go out and they host monthly breakfasts at the campus, organize and facilitate All Pro Dads Day of Presence during STAR testing, where they welcome our students and encourage them to do well as they step into the school building that day to do their testing. They organize and facilitate All Pro Dads Day of Presence on the last day of school also, helping to monitor our students, give them support, encouraging them, and wishing them a wonderful summer. So these are the dads who will be out there doing that and encouraging them. I wanted to give you the names of our dads who are here today. I'm going to start with our elementary school. We have Alexander Starr at Central. At Fair Meadows, we have Mr. Carlos Rivera. At Hyman, we have Philip Mitchell. At Maryfield, we have Ronnie Morris. At Smith, Mr. Patrick LeBlanc. At Byrd, we have Alton Jackson. At the high school, Mr. Reginald Shed. Also at the high school, Mr. Maurice Horton. A district co-captain is Dr. Alan Lockhart. And a second district co-captain is Maxie Johnson. And just to offer a little more awareness about the program itself, it's part of the state and federal programs here at the district. It's under the direction of Ms. Shavell Amelbert, our Family Engagement Coordinator. So we'd like to welcome them, and we look forward to seeing you at our campuses this year, gentlemen.
Dads, on behalf of our board, I want to say thank you. As a former counselor in this district, you have no idea what an impact you have on our kids, and I just thank you for giving time and effort to our school district and our kids. And I just want you to know that we thank you from the bottom of our hearts. Thank you, Ms. Richard. We'll now move into the superintendent's report, and I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Smith.
All right, well, thank you. Thank you, Madam President, board members, those that are here in attendance. Have just a few items here on the superintendent's report. First, want to give you some updates on the school year, the start of the school year. We had an outstanding start. We're off to a really good start, very pleased with where we are heading into our third week of school. I started the first day of school by visiting our bus transportation team. Had a great opportunity to visit with the drivers and the staff there. Always one of the favorite places for me to go and start my morning, plus they have good breakfast, too. It was a great way to start my day off on the first day of school. They were all excited, prepared, ready to go to have a great first day welcoming our students. I had an opportunity also to visit all of our campuses within the first two days, gave me an opportunity to greet principals, staff members, students, parents. Of course, some of the board members joined me at one of the campuses, at Acton. We had an opportunity to greet students there, and so that's always a very fun, good opportunity to see the bright, smiling faces, some crying faces as well, on the first day of school. But everybody made it through, and we were happy. We had a strong social media presence on the first day of school. We developed a Twitter site for hashtag #DevilleDay1, and so we had some outstanding photos and capturing lots of different things that were going on during the course of the first day of school. It gave us great exposure. We had about 2,196 impressions on our actual Twitter feed for that particular hashtag, and then we had 190 engagements. And so basically, what that means is we had a lot of coverage. A lot of people, a lot of exposure in terms of the happenings going on the first day of school. Many of our schools are focusing on creating a welcoming environment for their parents, and so one of the activities I wanted to highlight for you this morning was at Brandenburg. The Brandenburg administration provided coffee as the parents drove by to drop off their students, and so we're very excited about that. And really, in a really good place in terms of where we're starting at the beginning of the school year. Set the momentum and focus on getting our students and staff off to a great start. Also want to provide you with an enrollment update. Want to share some data with you over the first few weeks of school. Enrollment should begin to stabilize now, typically after Labor Day, enrollment starts to stabilize a bit. The good news is that our enrollment is up in comparison to this time last year. As a district, this was last week's data, this was as of last Friday. We had 12,716 students in the district. The high school, 4,364 students as of last Friday. So it's a really large number, it's a good number. We, of course, have been focusing on increasing the enrollment in our district, and our numbers are reflective of that. Open enrollment transfers, we had 261, and that is a number that I'm very pleased to be able to present to you all. There was a lot of effort done last year, also over the summer, to enhance our academic programs and get students to be attracted back to Duncanville ISD. And so this number is reflective of that. So we'll continue to monitor that as we go throughout the course of the year. Interestingly, we have not had very many Hurricane Harvey enrollees in the district this year. We've only had three documented at the high school, and so with most of the schools in the Houston area at least, coming back online this week, we may not really see that number increase. But we'll continue to monitor that, and I'll be providing the board updates on that. Wanted to give you just kind of a update on some data at the elementary, just so that you can kind of get a sense of where we are. Our largest elementary school is Bill Harts with 587 students. Our smallest enrolled middle school is Smith Elementary with 348 students. And so the staff and I have started to look at the process of leveling classes so we can balance those classes and maintain the appropriate ratios at each particular grade level. Also want to use this opportunity to update the board and remind the board about our board work sessions. We'll begin those next month. The board work session begins Monday, October 9th, and our work sessions will be held the second Monday of the month. And of course, unless otherwise noted, there may be some calendar days that we'll have to make adjustments, holidays and that sort of thing. But they're all scheduled on that second Monday. The purpose of that work session is to provide the board with a comprehensive overview of each agenda item, and then allow the board an opportunity to be able to ask questions, and the staff and myself will be providing responses for questions that are asked. Having the second meeting gives you an opportunity to have a comprehensive overview of each agenda item, and then that will assist you to better be informed about items that you'll be voting on on the following week, which is the regular board meeting week, that third Monday of each month. You have your individual iPads tonight, you are able to take those home. We will provide all the updated information on those iPads, and so you can access them at your leisure. I have one last item. I'd like to ask Mr. Todd Jones to approach the podium. As he approaches, I want to share with you who he is, in case you don't know him, and what he's here for. Mr. Jones is the board president in Lancaster ISD, and he also is very involved actively at the state level in various activities associated with school board and education items. And so he's a member of the Leadership Tasby Executive Board, and he is here to present a certificate to Duncanville ISD trustee, Mr. Tom Kennedy, who recently completed Leadership Tasby. And so I'll turn it over to Mr. Jones.
All right, good evening. Thank you, Dr. Smith, Madam President, and other distinguished members of the board. I am honored to be here before you. And Mr. Kennedy, now you see why I'm here. All right, first of all, I just want to share some information with you guys about Leadership Tasby, and hopefully other members of you guys will actually apply and come through the process. Leadership Tasby began in 1993 as a way to offer advanced leadership training to experienced board members. It is nationally recognized as the premier leadership training program sponsored by the Texas Association of School Boards. Upon successful completion of the course of study, the recognition of Master Trustee is bestowed on the individual. So I welcome you, Master Trustee. Leadership Tasby is a highly selective program, where normally one in four applicants is accepted as a member of the class of 36 participants. Over a 10-month period, the class meets five times in five different Texas cities. They hear from nationally recognized speakers to a variety of school districts and conduct personal research on a topic of relevance in Texas public schools. Class members represent districts from all parts of Texas with varying sizes of student enrollment and varying levels of property wealth. Leadership Tasby asks participants to work a little harder, be challenged with new thoughts, and renew their commitment to make a difference on behalf of the schoolchildren in Duncanville, ISD, and the entire state of Texas. So tonight, Tom Kennedy joins the ranks of more than 800 Leadership Tasby alumni. I am pleased to present Tom Kennedy with a certificate of Leadership Tasby alumni. Come down, sir, and receive this early, appreciate it.
All right, I do have one last item under the superintendent's report, actually a couple more items, but I'll turn it over to the appropriate staff. I want to call Ms. Kathleen Brown up to introduce recently hired Assistant Principals.
Good evening. One of the exciting things about this school year is that we've had in the excess of 14 promotions internally in our district. And so with those opportunities have come opportunities for other leaders as assistant principals in our organization. And so tonight, I'm here to introduce to you four new assistant principals. The first one, Ms. Ashley Harper, if you would join me. Ms. Harper is proud to serve as a new assistant principal at Byrd Middle School. Ms. Harper joined the district in 2010 as a science teacher at Reed Middle School. Since that time, she has served as a mentor teacher, department chair, and on several district-level committees. Most recently, Mrs. Harper served as a teacher specialist for the district. She was named Teacher of the Year for Reed Middle School in 2013-14. She was also a part of the district's inaugural Leadership Academy on last school year. She plans to bring strong organizational skills and creative problem-solving to her new role and to place an emphasis on student success and faculty support. We want to welcome Ms. Ashley Harper. If Ms. Harper's family is in the audience, if you'd please stand. Congratulations. Next, we have Ms. Alva Walker. Ms. Walker has been named as the new assistant principal at Maryfield Elementary School. She brings over 16 years of experience to the district. She spent two of those 16 years, I say her best years, at Byrd Middle School. Ms. Walker has served as a special education teacher, mentor teacher, inclusion coach, and most recently, a special education supervisor in DeSoto ISD. She also has extensive knowledge in differentiated instruction and curriculum design. She is excited to rejoin the Duncanville ISD team and plans to use her many skills to positively impact student learning. Ms. Walker. All right, ask that Ms. Walker's support system, please stand. Next, we have Mr. Eric Bonner. Mr. Bonner is joining the district as an assistant principal at Duncanville High School. Mr. Bonner brings experience from both the college and local school district level. He has served as an astronomy advisor and coordinator at UNT. He has also served as a health science teacher, special education teacher, department chair, and art facilitator, most recently in Mesquite ISD. Mr. Bonner was named Teacher of the Year in 2013 at Lake Highlands Junior High. He is currently pursuing his doctorate of educational leadership at the University of North Texas. In his new role, he is committed to promoting an exemplary education for all students. Welcome, Mr. Eric Bonner. We'd ask for Mr. Bonner's family, please, to please stand. And last but not least, coming back home, Mr. Brian Byrd Jr. Mr. Byrd is the Academic Associate Principal at Duncanville High School. He brings 14 years of experience to the district. Mr. Byrd started his career right here in Duncanville ISD as a Texas history and world geography teacher at Byrd Middle School. Since that time, he has served as a high school teacher, and most recently, as an assistant principal in Arlington ISD. He was honored to be named as the Arlington ISD Assistant Principal of the Year for the 2016-17 school year, and we snatched him away. Mr. Byrd believes that collaboration and instructional coaching are the building blocks that lead to establishing a premier school culture. He also believes that all students can learn, achieve academic success, and be prepared for the next part of their educational journey after high school. He's excited to be back home in Duncanville ISD and is committed to continuous improvement as an instructional leader at Duncanville High School, Mr. Brian Byrd Jr. We'd ask that Mr. Byrd's family, please stand. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. I'm going to call up Ms. Andre Fields for our monthly bond update.
Good evening, Madam President, and to the board members, and to Dr. Smith, and to the waiting audience. It is my pleasure to bring to you the monthly bond and construction report. First of all, we want to say thank you, board members and community, for your support of the ribbon cutting, which was held on August 24th at the new Acton Elementary. We had a great audience and great participation on that evening. In regard to Acton and the bond update, of course, we've completed the training for the staff at Acton with the intercom system, the stage lighting, the sound system, and all the cafeteria equipment. We are continuing to work and complete the final punch list of items. As I said earlier this past week, that anytime you have a new facility, you're going to have some things that you need to work out, and so our construction group, North Star, and our maintenance department are continuing to work on those, but they are fully moved in, and the students are there, and it's a wonderful, wonderful facility. Regarding to safety and security package two, that package is complete. Of course, I think the last few months, we've shared with you that we are continuing to fine-tune, again, some of the older doors, the strikes, the card readers, and North Star, along with our technology and security staff members, are continuing to work on those. But that work is complete, and we are thankful for that. Under Aging Facilities Package One, first of all, I remind you that Daniel Intermediate, the work there, has been completed. And then on last month, board, you approved the GMP for Aging Facilities Package One. I'd like to remind you that the campuses included in Aging Facilities Package One were Alexander, Central, Fair Meadows, Harden, Smith, Maryfield, Duncanville High School, and Duncanville High School Panther Stadium Restrooms. Also, the aging facilities work is to refresh and renovate the restrooms for ADA compliance. North Star and Duncanville ISD staff have met with all the principals of the impacted campuses to review the schedule and logistics for the scope of work. The work on the first set of restrooms has already begun, because we've begun the work at Harden Elementary, and will begin for the rest of the campuses starting in September, and the work will go through these packages, the elementary schools in particular, through November. North Star will have three different site superintendents on duty so they can work on all six of the impacted campuses at the same time. The DHS work and the work at the stadium will begin in the spring. The DHS work and the work at the stadium will begin in the spring. In regard to Aging Facilities Packages Two and Three, bid openings for Aging Facilities Packages Two and Three was held on August the twenty-second, and the GMP for these two packages will be presented to you for your approval later on during this meeting. As a reminder, Package Two includes Brandenburg, Byrd, and Reed, and refreshing and renovation of restrooms for ADA compliance. Board members, as you will recall, the initial bond package called for Brandenburg to be repurposed as an elementary school, but with your direction and approval of the repackaging of aging facilities portion of the bond, the campus will receive additional cosmetic refresh to include replacing of carpet in classrooms with rubber flooring and replacing existing ceiling grid and ceiling tiles, new administration reception desk. Security, safety and security scope work will also be done at Brandenburg, and it will include a secure vestibule, intrusion hardware, video cameras, exterior lighting to the parking lot, and card readers. So Brandenburg will receive a significant amount of work in this package. Package Three includes the fire alarms and intercoms that you approved for us last month, and they will touch the campuses for Alexander, Brandenburg, Byrd, Central, Daniel, Fair Meadows, Harden, Maryfield, Reed, and Smith. And we also have additional allowances included in the GMP that we're presenting to you tonight to include the fire alarm for Billharts, which its fire panel is at its end of life, the Central Kitchen, the same scenario as with Billharts, and then the intercom system for Pace High School. And last, but certainly not least, is Duncanville High School Collegiate Academy. The work at Collegiate Academy is complete, and we are excited about the renovated space that the students were able to enter at the beginning of the school year. We have a few pictures there for you, and I'm going to... Got me back there? Well, there we go. The renovation timeline, you you may recall that we were to be complete with the project on August the fifteenth, and it was indeed complete. You see there, the furniture has been delivered and installed, and as of Friday, all of the furniture was installed and delivered. The owner furnished equipment and projectors already also been installed. Of course, you can see an area there, the one of the open collaboration spaces with the beautiful furnishings. I know that the students are, because I was there last week, they're taking full advantage of the renovated space. And then you see the little cafe-like area there with the high tables and chairs, a marker board and paint has been applied, and the final clearing of the area is complete. And then there are some minor punch list operations that are still in in progress. The room and cast aluminum signage has already been installed. It was installed last week, at the end of last week, and testing of all the systems and other finished work is underway. The area is substantially complete, students are there, and it is an exciting place to write success stories, one student at a time. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. The last item on the superintendent's report is an update, a monthly financial and budget update that will be presented by Ms. Jan Arrington.
Thank you very much. The financial and investment reports are listed for you, starting on page number twenty-nine in your board book. Here's what you need to know regarding this month's financial and investment reports. Overall, the current year's actual revenues and expenditures through July thirty-first are tracking closely to what the actual expenditures were at this same point in the prior year for the general operating, child nutrition, and debt service funds. Are there any questions about the financial report, an investment report? Then I will move on to our budget report. This report is listed for you and your board book on page number twenty-seven. And here is what you need to know regarding this report. The general operating budget reflects proposed revisions to increase revenues by seventy-five thousand eight hundred sixty-seven dollars, and the general operating budget reflects proposed revisions to increase expenditures by two hundred sixty-one thousand nine hundred ninety-seven dollars, so that the overall impact to the seventeen-eighteen general operating budget is a net decrease of one hundred eighty-six thousand one hundred thirty dollars to the general operating fund balance. There are no proposed revisions to either the child nutrition budget or the debt service budget. Are there any questions regarding the revisions to the general operating budget? Thank you very much. I would like to just take a moment and give you an update on the sale of the remaining bonds from the two thousand fourteen bond program. On Thursday, August twenty-fourth, the Series two thousand seventeen bonds were sold at an all-in true interest rate of one point six five percent. That is point seven percent below the two point three five percent rate that was presented to the board back in July. That's huge. Duncanville ISD has accepted a rate that's point seven percent less than what was proposed, so we will be paying less interest on those four point seven million dollars in bonds than were issued than what was originally projected. The proceeds of those bonds, four point seven six million dollars, are scheduled to be delivered to the district's construction fund on Thursday, September twenty-first. After delivery, the district will not have any bonds remaining to be sold from the two thousand fourteen bond program. BOK Financial Services are financial advisors, particularly Josh McLaughlin is the person responsible, the firm and the person responsible for facilitating this sale for us. Are there any questions about the bond sale? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jan. I will turn it over to Madam President. That concludes the superintendent's report for this month.
And we will now move into the consent agenda. All items may be acted upon at the same time. Do I have a motion? Carla?
Madam President, I move to move items C, D, and G to the consent agenda. Second?
Second.
Carla made the motion, and Jan has seconded the motion to amend the agenda as stated. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes seven and oh. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Tom made the motion, and Phil seconded the consent agenda to be approved as amended. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes seven oh. We now move into the action agenda, and the first item is to consider approval of the resolution to accept the twenty-seventeen certified tax rolls and the estimated collection rate. And the presenter is Ms. Jan Arrington, who's busy tonight.
Thank you very much. The resolution and relevant reports for this agenda item are listed for you, starting on page number thirty-seven in your board book. And here is what you need to know regarding this agenda item. Texas Property Tax Code Sections twenty-six point oh four A and B require the administration to submit the certified property tax rolls to the Board of Trustees and the estimated collection rate. The attached certified appraisal rolls were provided by the Dallas Central Appraisal District, and the estimated collection rate of one hundred percent was provided by the Dallas County Tax Office. Overall, the certified values provided by the Dallas Central Appraisal District are in line with the values used to prepare our two thousand seventeen-two thousand eighteen When updated information is received, the original budget projections are updated to determine the impact as we go through the year. Are there any questions about this agenda item and the resolution to approve the certified property tax rolls and the estimated collection rate?
Do I have a motion to consider approval of resolution to accept the twenty-seventeen certified tax rolls and the estimated collection rate? So moved.
Second.
Jan has made the motion, and Tom seconded it. Are there any comments? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes seven oh. And Ms. Arrington, we will now move to action item B, consider approval of an ordinance setting the twenty-seventeen tax rate.
Thank you very much. The ordinance and the adopted two thousand seventeen-eighteen budget for this agenda item are listed for you, starting on page number forty-six in your board book. And here is what you need to know regarding this agenda item. Texas Tax Code Section twenty-six point oh five requires the administration to publish the notice of public hearing and hold the public hearing as published. The public hearing was conducted earlier this evening as required. The proposed tax rate of one point five two one four eight is the same tax rate that was approved by the board last year and is the tax rate that supports the two thousand seventeen-two thousand eighteen budget. Are there any questions about the ordinance to approve the tax rate for the two thousand seventeen tax year? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Arrington. Do I have a motion to consider approval of an ordinance setting the twenty-seventeen tax rate?
Madam President, I move that the board moves to approve the ordinance to set the twenty-seventeen tax rate at one point five two one four eight, as submitted by Jan Arrington, Chief Financial Officer, and as recommended by Dr. Mark Smith, Superintendent of Schools.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Tom made the motion, and Joe seconded it. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes seven oh. We will now move on to item E, consider approval of the District of Innovation Policies. Presenter, Ms. Melissa Kates.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, and Dr. Smith. Tonight, we have before you two additional District of Innovation policies. If the board will recall, at the last board meeting, we passed several different policies that would help implement our new District of Innovation Plan. So tonight, we have the AF Local Plan, which basically says that the district is now a District of Innovation, and then also, we have before you DK Local, and this allows a superintendent to hire teachers under the District of Innovation Plan. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do I have a motion to consider approval of desig... Oh, excuse me, sorry. Do I have a motion to to consider the approval of the District of Innovation Policies? So moved. Janice made the motion, and Tom seconded it. Any questions, comments? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes seven to zero. We will now move on to consider the approval of a guaranteed maximum price for the two thousand fourteen bond aging facilities package number two and number three, Ms. Fields.
And good evening again. Tonight, we are asking your approval for the guaranteed maximum price for the aging facilities packages two and three. This is the final phase of the one hundred and two point five million dollar two thousand fourteen bond program. You have before you, and I think I read the campuses earlier, of that will be included in packages two and three, so I won't repeat myself, but we also included as some additional allowances, and do want to emphasize that, that the Billharts Fire Alarm in Package Three, it is at its end of life, and we're asking for your approval for this to be included, along with the fire panel at Central Kitchen, where we produce the majority of our meals for our students, and then the public address system at Pace High School. You have the the information before you regarding the guaranteed maximum price for packages two and three. We have representatives here tonight from North Star Construction. Mr. Crutcher is here, and Ms. Latonya Whitfield-Hornwood-Huckabee, who will oversee the projects, if approved, is also present. I do want to share with you, if you're looking at the numbers, the construction cost limits, those were the numbers that were set aside for the work to be done, in essence, the budget for the projects. And then you see the guaranteed maximum price on the right-hand side, and you had some other attachments as well, that talked about all of the different contractors, subcontractors that were listed in the the information, but on the right column, you have the guaranteed maximum price. Under the package two, you see, of course, Byrd, Reed, and Brandenburg, and I do want to address the numbers, because we have the cost limit, and then we have the GMP. There was some reduced scope at some of the facilities, and one, thanks again to our very hard-working, capable maintenance staff that were able to do some of the work, but additionally, we are so grateful to the city of Duncanville, because when our architects met with them prior to us going to bid, they grandfathered a great number of the fixtures that were inside the campuses. Hence, we did not have to replace them. They did not require us to bring those spaces up to code. If you recall, this is about our ADA compliance with our restrooms, so we're very thankful to the city of Duncanville for their support. Hence, it was a cost savings to us. I think I've explained already about Brandenburg, and then finally, we've shared with you about the fire alarm panels and PA systems. Are there any questions?
Do I have a motion to consider approval of a guaranteed maximum price for the two thousand fourteen bond aging facilities package number two and three?
So moved.
Second. Tom made the motion, and Cassandra seconded it. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. We will now move to action item H, consider approval of Duncanville High School Acapella Choir attendance at the Winter Park Ski Music Festival in Winter Park, Colorado, April eighteenth through the twenty-second, presented by Mr. Sam Nix.
President McNeely, members of the board, Dr. Smith. It is my privilege this evening to bring to you for your consideration and approval of the Duncanville High School Acapella Choir attendance at the Winter Park Ski Music Festival in Winter Park, Colorado. That's the dates of April the eighteenth through the twenty-second of this school year. According to our board policy, FMG Local, all out-of-state trips... According to our board policy, FMG Local, all out-of-state trips taken by any student organization or any student groups requires board approval. All of the information pertaining to this particular trip has been provided to you in your board packet. However, it would be my pleasure to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Do they need any more chaperones?
We definitely can ask them about that.
I just thought I'd throw my name in.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Do you want to take this opportunity to recognize the choir team that's here?
So we are very thankful that our choir team can be here. One of the things that is so exciting about this opportunity is that the exposure that our students will have to the musicality, and also, our performance, what they will be able to see that we produce out of Duncanville. So this is an exciting opportunity for all of our students, and we're thankful for this opportunity, for your consideration of approval.
And we'll make sure we bring back all the pictures that we follow.
Okay, good.
Do you know what your fundraising advance will be?
I'm sorry, one more time.
Fundraise or fundraise in advance?
Yes, ma'am. We've actually started our first fundraiser this past week. We usually start with cash cow, which is our cookie dough, because it's expected. And then we're going to go on to the online fundraiser of Snap Raise. So we're trying to allow these students to have the opportunity to fundraise earlier in the year, so they can just go ahead and take care of it. If they're not able to fundraise, we do have a payment plan set up that they can pay throughout the year.
And I would just like to know, just ballpark figure, about how many students are in Acappella Choir this year?
As of right now, we have around 35 to 40. There are a few schedules that are still being adjusted. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to consider approval of Duncanville High School Acappella Choir attendance at the Winter Park Ski Music Festival in Winter Park, Colorado, for April the 18th through the 22nd?
So moved.
Tom made the motion, and Cassandra seconded the motion. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes seven oh. Thank you. We now move to the communications from citizens. We do not have any communications from the citizens, being that there is no further items to discuss. This meeting is adjourned.